There. We're getting super high tech with our new system.
Start that. Started go to. Rest on here.
Should be good. And you're hitting record on the machine?
I'm sitting in manager. Things start happening.
We're good to go.
We're good to go.
All right. I call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission on this October 12th. Will everyone please join me in a flag salute?
Apleggius to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Ingle.
Here.
Sarkozy.
Here.
Castellanos. Vice Chair Stroman.
Here.
Chair Willis.
Here. I may not need to say anything, but cell phones, pagers, similar devices need to be set on silent or vibrate mode or turned off unless you're an emergency responder. I didn't notice, do we have anybody offsite catching us on Zoom or?
We do have some go-to meeting.
Okay.
We do have an audience, yes.
So if they want to say anything, contribute, I'll throw it out to them when we're in the public hearing and whatnot. Okay, so the first thing, we have the consent calendar, and we've gotten an amended copy of our minutes. Have you had a chance to look through them? Any questions, any corrections?
And so as staff, we did receive some calls right after the package was delivered. And so I do have a set of amended minutes for each of you. There are some amendments on the first page, first paragraph, essentially replacing Chair Castellanos with Willis in that paragraph. And then on page two, there was an incomplete sentence at the first paragraph where it said, Commissioner Sarkozy inquired, and we have updated that to complete the sentence. Commissioner Sarkozy inquired what was going to happen with the developed lot, and Mr. Crummick responded that his family would continue to live on that property. And with those, we would ask that you would approve the minutes as amended.
All right, thank you.
And just for the record, Commissioner Castellanos has arrived.
Yes.
Better late than never.
Any questions, corrections, or motions?
I will motion to approve the amended minutes as given to us tonight.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Was that Jeremy?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
I abstain.
I abstain, I abstent.
Okay, all right, two abstentions, okay. The first thing on our public hearing is something that has been canceled by the applicant because I'm not sure whether she or they took it upon themselves, or whether it was suggested that they do something, but it's wonderful.
Through the project and discussions about the project with the applicant, they chose to, instead of follow through with the variance and try to keep the fence at a taller height, they chose to comply with the municipal code height requirements for the fencing, and they cut it down to the appropriate height. So they canceled their project.
Okay, it looks good, the shorter fence. They've still got a yard, they were concerned about not having a yard, but aesthetically it looks good, so one last thing for us to deal with. Okay, number three, conditional use permit variance and master plan 21-754. Applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit variance and master plan to install a 100-foot to 130-foot tall ground mount lattice tower for their wireless communication services company. Sequa Class III categorical exemption under Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The address of the proposed project was the home of the original Strand's Ace Hardware Store. Our records only go back in our business license to 1976, but we are aware that they were there much earlier. And the assessor record, they had contacted me after this report had gone out, that that building was originally constructed in 1911, but has always had a store component. And that was until Ace Hardware relocated to its McHenry Avenue location in 2007. The building then became home to the Green Pea and Antique Store and Garden Shop. An interior remodel permit was issued in 2007, which included the addition of three new bathrooms. City records indicate that Velociter Wireless was originally located at 1900 McHenry Avenue, Suite 103. Velociter Wireless has had a city business license since 2003. The business license file notes that in late 2011 or early 2012, Velociter Wireless relocated to 1802 Main Street without obtaining city approvals for that business license relocation. At some point in time, the existing rooftop lattice tower located on the building was installed, but the city has no record or documentation of its installation. Velociter Wireless reached out to the city in May 2021, expressing interest in constructing a wireless communication facility, cell tower, in the rear of their business. City staff has worked with them to obtain the information needed to move forward with the processes required to complete their project request. Relevant federal and state laws. The city has authority over siting of wireless communications facilities, however, its authority is limited by various state and federal laws. The principal restrictions on local wireless siting authority are found in federal law dating from 1996, 47 USC Section 332(c)(7) that, one, requires action of applications to be within a reasonable period of time; two, provides that local regulations and placement decisions may not prohibit or effectively prohibit provision of personal wireless services; three, requires that denials must be in writing, supported by substantial evidence; four, prohibits any consideration of radio frequency RF emissions in siting decisions if applicant meets FCC standards; does not allow unreasonable discrimination among providers of functionally equivalent services, and provides for expedited appeals to court. Since 2009, the FCC has adopted a total of five shot clocks or timelines within which to act on applications for wireless facilities, and the relevant shot clock for this application was adopted in 2009. It gives the city 150 days to take final action on the application, including any appeals. Velociter's application was submitted on September 3rd, 2021, which means that the city has 111, 16 days remaining as of the date of the staff report to take final action, including appeals. State deemed granted remedy. California later adopted AB 57, a state law that took effect on January 1st, 2016, and created a deemed granted remedy for applicants if local government fails to act on an application during the time period allowed by these 90 and 150-day FCC shot clocks. This remedy is available for Velociter's application. Minimum permit duration. Under California Government Code 65964B, the minimum duration for a wireless permit must be 10 years, with some exceptions for public safety reasons or substantial land use reasons. Code analysis. In accordance with Escalon Municipal Code, Section 17.11.040, a communication facility tower requires a conditional use permit in the community commercial or C2 zone. EMC Chapter 13.21 provides the process zoning design standards and deviations from standards for wireless communications facilities. So looking at 13.21020, process where a master plan is required, the city code requires submission and approval of a master plan of all locally proposed sites. Approval of the master plan is not an approval or authorization of any specific facility, it is merely an acknowledgement of the applicant's wireless facility deployment plans in the city. Approval of the master plan does not obviate the need for required permits for individual facilities. The master plan for Velociter is included in Exhibit C for review and approval by the Planning Commission. Velociter's master plan includes just this one proposed site, which is located at the 1802 Main Street. 13.21030, zoning. According to this section, wireless communication facilities in the C2 zoning district shall be permitted and conditionally permitted according to the city's zoning map. Further, Section 13.21030A states that with respect to wireless communications facilities, there are two permitted uses in a C2 zone. One, building mounted when compatible with external design features of an existing structure and multiple-use facilities; and two, when designed as a piece of public art. Velociter's existing tower is building roof-mounted, and they are requesting approval of a new lattice tower with antennas to be located in the north corner of the property, replacing the existing tower on the roof. The existing tower height was 80 feet in height, the proposed new tower is 100 to 130 feet in height. Therefore, a variance approval is required for the new tower to be ground-mounted and not designed as a piece of public art, or as a public piece of art. 13.21040 for design standards. This section, letter E, number five, is the city's current design standards for wireless communication facilities and states that lattice towers shall not be permitted anywhere in the city. Velociter's existing tower is a lattice tower, therefore, a variance approval is required for the new tower to also maintain the lattice design. 13.21060, abandonment. The details for this section have been added into the conditions of approval, and it just gives direction in the case that these type of facilities were abandoned. So the findings required by the Escalon Municipal Code. The following findings are required for a use permit and must be based on substantial evidence in view of the whole record. And there are three letters, A, B, and C, and I'm going to get into those when we get into the resolution, so we can come back to those. And then there's also findings required for a variance that are listed as A, B, C, and D, also located in our resolution that I will get to as we move forward. As far as public outreach, a public hearing notice was published in the Escalon Times on September 29th. On September 30th, a notice of public hearing was mailed to every property owner and occupant within 300 feet of the subject site. As noted on the latest assessor's record, this is in accordance with municipal code requirements. Staff did not receive any responses from the hearing, the public hearing notices, and responses received by outside or affected agencies and other departments are attached to the staff report or incorporated into the conditions of approval. Schedule, the Planning Commission's decision will begin a 10-business-day appeal period during which the commission's action may be appealed to the city council or called up to the council by a council member, and this would expire 5:00 PM on October 26th. If approved, and there is no appeal filed within that period, the applicant may proceed with the project. If denied and no appeal is filed, the decision of the Planning Commission is final. The current cost to file an appeal is $656. Staff has reviewed the comments received from all agencies and has put together the following items to serve as the proposed conditions of approval. The Planning Commission should review the project and make modifications to the conditions of approval as needed. So we do have those items in the recommendation. The exact conditions of approval have also been added into the resolution. Where's the resolution towards the end? I want to go to the resolution because it has everything laid out there.
Exhibit I.
Exhibit I is the resolution. And so Section 2 of the resolution, which this is a resolution, I know we haven't done one in a while, so this is a resolution of the Escalon Planning Commission determining the project is categorically exempt from the SEQUA and approving the use permit and variance for project application 21-754 with Velociter Wireless. So Section 1 is the recitals, which basically reviews everything up to this point, which is this meeting. Section 2 is the required findings for approval. So based on the evidence contained within the record, the Planning Commission would hereby make the following findings and approves the master plan use permit and variances. For A, the wireless communications facility master plan. City Code Section 13.21020 requires the submission and approval of a master plan of all locally proposed sites. We discussed this as being needed for their one site, the one proposed on 1802 Main Street, which is the master plan. And then B will review the use permit, which goes through items A, B, and C required for a use permit. And so for A being, the following findings are required for a use permit, and the commission makes a positive determination for each required finding. A, that the use is necessary or desirable in relation to the purposes of the Escalon General Plan, this title, and the economic, social, and environmental status of the city. Velociter states the tower and wireless communications facility will provide improved and faster service to both city and surrounding rural areas. B, that the use will be properly related to other uses, transportation facilities, and other public facilities in the area, and will not cause undue environmental impacts relating to noise, odor, pollution, et cetera. The tower and wireless communications facilities will improve service to residences and businesses, and Velociter must comply with the city noise regulations and other applicable safety codes. The facility operator or property owner is responsible for maintaining the tower and wireless communications facilities. C, that the use will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons living or working in the vicinity, or be materially detrimental to the public welfare of the city and its residents. The approved tower and wireless communications facilities must comply with all applicable building standards, safety standards, the city's noise ordinance, and the FCC guidelines for radio frequency emissions. C, regarding variances, the findings that are required in order to approve a variance, the commission makes a positive determination for each required finding. The first finding, letter A, is that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property or to the intended case which do not generally apply to other property in the same vicinity and under identical zone classifications. This project, the installation of a 100-foot lattice tower in a C2 zone, is unique to Velociter's network needs. Given the tower height that the applicant requires for network reasons, disguising the tower as a piece of public art or other structure would likely create further visual disruption or blind than a lattice tower. This variance is specific to the proposed tower and the applicant's network needs and is not setting precedent for future wireless communications facilities and towers in the city of Escalon. B, that the special circumstances relate to the property or use, not the financial or other personal condition of the applicant, nor to any self-imposed condition on the property that is a result of actions taken by the present owner or his predecessor. As mentioned in the prior finding and Velociter's application materials, the tower height is necessary for Velociter's line-of-sight service to reach over obstacles and trees. C, that the granting of a variance shall not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity and the same zone classification. As mentioned in finding A, this project and tower design are necessary for Velociter's network needs and the specific location in which the proposed installation is to be located. Letter D, that the result would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. The approved tower and wireless communication facilities must comply with all applicable building standards, safety standards, the city's noise ordinance, and FCC guidelines for radio frequency emissions. Section 3 is the environmental review, which is pursuant to the authority and criteria contained in the California Environmental Quality Act. The Planning Commission has analyzed the proposal and found that this project would qualify for a SEQUA Class III categorical exemption under Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. If approved, the notice of violation would be filed at the county recorder's office. And so then Section 4 would review the Planning Commission's action, which if the Planning Commission were to approve this, based on these foregoing findings and evidence contained within the record, the Planning Commission would approve the wireless communications facilities master plan use permit and variance for this project application with the conditions as set in this listing. So as you know, we had recently updated our conditions to specific and general, so the specific conditions would have the approval, which would be the variance and use permit that would run with the land and its benefits and limitations binding on subsequent owners of the subject property. The variance and conditional use permit, as approved by the Planning Commission on October 12th, unless changed, would be proposed. A new lattice tower with antennas to be ground-mounted and located in the northeast corner of the property, not designed as a piece of public art or a public piece of art at a maximum height of 100 feet. That was the minimum height that was done. I'm not sure if Velociter has further confirmed the height, because they did put 100 to 130, and that can be discussed as one of your questions. Then we have the variance permit validity. The variance and conditional use permit are specific to the project and run with the land. If the project is modified, a variance or use permit would be required. Permit duration. The use permit shall be valid for a period of 10 years, which is that minimum requirement that we had advised you earlier in accordance with state law, unless pursuant to another provision of the code or these conditions. It would expire sooner or is terminated at the end of the 10 years from the date of issuance. Such permit shall automatically expire unless an extension or renewal has been granted. And so they would follow the instructions in this section to either amend it or extend it at that time. Four, regarding amendments, the business shall apply to the Planning Commission for a master plan amendment and all required city permits when increasing the number of sites or altering existing sites. Number five, regarding maintenance, the facility operator or property owner shall be responsible for maintaining the facility in an appropriate manner, which includes but is not limited to regular cleaning of the facility, keeping the facility painted in an appropriate manner, keeping bird nests and other similar items clear from the antenna area and all around the maintenance of the facility. Number six, regarding underground utilities, all utilities associated with the wireless communication facility shall be underground. Regarding materials, the materials and paint used shall be non-reflective, non-flammable, and of durable quality to the extent technically feasible. All visible wireless facilities, including shrouds, cabinets, and visible equipment, shall be constructed from or coated with graffiti-resistant materials. Fencing, no chain-link fencing is permitted associated with any wireless communications facility. Regarding screening, support facilities such as cabinets shall be designed to be compatible with the external design features of adjacent buildings and shall conform to all zoning requirements. The ground-mounted facilities shall be screened from public view by walls, fences, trellises, landscaping, and similar treatments. Security, all equipment and facilities shall be installed in a manner to avoid being an attractive nuisance and prevent unauthorized access, climbing, and graffiti. Noise, wireless facilities and all accessory equipment and transmission equipment must comply with the Escalon Municipal Code noise regulations, which may be amended from time to time. And then we do have a note in there regarding the radio frequency exposure compliance, and this basically states that they must comply with the standards and regulations of the FCC and any other government, state or federal governmental agency with the authority to regulate those RF exposure standards. And there is some information in there regarding that. Adverse impacts on adjacent properties. Permanee shall undertake all reasonable efforts to avoid undue adverse impacts to adjacent properties and/or uses that may arise from the construction, operation, maintenance, modification, and removal of the facility. 14 discusses interference with city communication systems. Interference with the city's communication systems or other governmental emergency systems is prohibited. Further, no permits issued pursuant to this chapter of the city code establish any guarantee or warranty that licensee's facility will be free from interference from the city or third-party communication systems. And then we move into the standard conditions, which are usually attached to all conditional use permits and variances regarding use of property, the use limitation, any change in occupancy or use, contamination, code compliance, temporary fencing, a hold harmless and indemnification, and then compliance with conditions, building permits, construction hours, exterior maintenance, hazardous materials, fees, lighting, signs, and business license. So if you run back to the staff report, it would be page 5 of 9. Towards the center of the item, there's that recommendation. So in order for Planning Commission to make a decision on this application, you would open a public hearing and take any public testimony on the project, close the public hearing and deliberate, decide on whether to approve wireless communications facility master plan, and then to approve the use permit and variances, you would, A, find the project SEQUA exempt and authorize staff to file the notice of exemption, make the findings as required per Section 17.57030, findings for variances, and 17.56030, conditional use permit. And then C, approve the variance and use permit application with the conditions of approval as proposed or as modified by the Planning Commission. If you were to deny the use permit or variances, A, no SEQUA determination is required, and B, denial would need to be put in writing, providing the reasons as to why the commission cannot make the findings and be based on substantial evidence in the record. If the commission needs more time for deliberation, the commission can continue the item to a date certain, which would typically be our next meeting. So if you have any questions of staff, we'll try to answer them. We also have Kristi available from Velociter Wireless in the audience, if you have any questions of her. And that is it.
Thank you, very thorough. I do have a couple of questions, and then I'll throw it open to the other commissioners. On page 6, permit duration, right in the middle, it says a person holding this permit must either, or two, at least 90 days. So it seems like there's number one is left out. I'm not sure if I'm reading it right, or if there's something.
Say, when I read it all together, it made sense when I read the entire thing. A person holding this permit must either, or two, at least 90 days prior to expiration, submit an application to renew the permit, which applicant must, among all of the requirements, demonstrate that the impact of the wireless facility cannot be reduced. The wireless facility must remain in place until it is act upon that. I am not sure what that is. We can confirm that with legal counsel and provide an update on that.
It could be in our discussion tonight. We'll find what we need without it, but I'd hate to continue the case just because that piece of information isn't there.
I would think it would be, if I had to finish it out, because we talk about extensions or renewals, that a person holding this permit must either apply to the city for the extension or amendment to extend, or two, at least 90 days prior to the expiration, submit an application to renew the permit.
Okay.
You could either renew it 90 days prior, or possibly a mandate. I'm thinking that that's what it would be, but we can always check back with legal counsel and update the conditions of approval as appropriate. With minor changes like that, Diana and I can make them, but if we determine that it's something that would need to be reviewed by Planning Commission, we would need to bring it back to you.
Okay. I understand, in fencing, where it says no chain-link fencing, that's on page 7, and then on page 8, during any construction, temporary fencing shall be installed and maintained. The property has got iron fencing on 1, 2, 3, 4 sides with two buildings bordering. I can't imagine a second set of fencing inside, so I'm not sure why that condition needs to be there.
The no chain-link fencing is specifically?
No, but just 20 temporary fencing.
Oh, okay, that's just added into our municipal code that if they decided to put up temporary fencing around the area that they're constructing? around the area that they're constructing, we do allow for it in accordance with code. So, that is like general language that we just add into the conditions in the event that they do want to add that there.
But you're correct. You're correct. Because it already, the perimeter is already fully fenced. People walking down the sidewalk couldn't just walk into the site into their construction zone, then they would not need to put up additional temporary fencing.
Yeah, it's not required, but if they were to, maybe to fence it off from any employees or other people that are parking there, they could.
So, during any construction, temporary fencing may be installed rather than shall be installed?
We could do "may." Sure.
I like "may." We'll see.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And then, back to number 9, the screening from public view, I don't get that one. If you're walking down the sidewalk and you look between the, you know, and the metal fence, I mean, I don't know why it has to be screened.
That would just be a design standard language to prevent people from seeing cabinets and other telecommunications equipment. If the Planning Commission doesn't feel that that needs to be screened in this case, you can modify that.
Are there going to be cabinets or just the tower?
We'll have to ask the applicant.
We'll have to ask the applicant. Okay. I think I had one more. Okay, is there a setback? Does the tower have to be so many feet from the iron fence, either, on either of the 2 sides where, of the corner where it's located?
We did not have any setbacks listed in that section of the municipal code for wireless facility.
So, it can be a foot? It can be 2 feet, 3 feet, 4 feet?
Correct.
Okay. I'll open up for the commissioners if you have any questions of staff. Okay, we'll start with that end. Mr. Castellanos, do you have any questions of staff?
I'll pass it down to the other end.
Commissioner?
I do not.
Commissioner Suckus?
No, I don't at this time either.
Yes, of course I do. Staff, what is the rationale in the municipal code to not permit a lattice fence?
So, we did.
No, lattice tower, not.
A lattice tower. I knew what you meant, yes. And so, we did discuss that together as staff. We also talked to our IT department about it, and then, we talked to legal counsel. And lattice towers, from what we're understanding, it's purely aesthetic. So, at the time that our municipal code section on wireless communications facilities was adopted, that was, that was what was wanted at that time was no lattice towers. Obviously, we have one that was existing, and we do have other ones located in town. They are specific to either governmental agencies or emergency services. But in talking with legal counsel, it's acceptable to be able to accept the lattice tower, and that's why they indicated that. It was legal counsel that addressed those requirements for variances and conditional use permit. Because with the state and federal requirements, it is okay to do so and not set a precedent in doing so.
So, is the tower that just went on top of the fire department, is that a lattice tower?
It is, correct.
Okay. Nothing further.
Okay, I'll open the, open up the public hearing so that anyone in the audience can step up and speak on this issue.
Ms. Chair, before we open the public hearing, I would like it noted in the minutes that I do, like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I do attend the same church as the applicant, and sometimes, we do volunteer at the same service on Sunday, but that will not affect my decision as far as this application goes.
Thank you. Okay, name and address and?
Yes, I'm Kristy Anthony. I work for Velociter at 1525 Second Street, Escalon, California.
And you wish to speak on?
No, I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, I want to start with, it says 100 to 130 feet, and then, at some point, it says specifically 100 feet. So, which is it?
Well, we would like to go 120 feet, but because of the code, we weren't sure what would be acceptable. Because the code did say no lattice towers, it didn't, you know. We are even willing to put a monopole if you prefer that instead.
The existing tower is 80 feet, and it's on top of the building, which is what, 25?
I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, it's 2 stories, so.
30 feet, maybe?
Maybe.
You stole my question.
So, and that could be a determination of Planning Commission. We did the 100 because that was the minimum that they were requesting. If Planning Commission wants to modify that to 120, that is acceptable.
Now, it says that the construction is geared toward withstanding wind. I don't know how high the wind got yesterday, but is that something that you've taken into consideration?
Well, we work with the company that makes the towers, and we tell them, "This is what we want. This is the zone that it's in. This is how tall we want it." And they determine which tower is appropriate for us to put in. So, we don't, we have engineering documents. I can show you what they look like. They talk about wind. They talk about sleet, rain, you know, all of that stuff in there, and they tell us what's acceptable for that tower. So, I think most of ours, I can look and see what kind of, like one of the towers we built, surface wind speeds 60 miles an hour, and that's not even the type of, that's the lower end of tower, which would not be appropriate for our location because of where we're located. So, they do take all that into account.
And what's the foundation? Is it adhered right to the pavement that's there now, or is there a case that it sits on or covered or?
So, they would actually build, well, first of all, it talked about the northeast corner. That may not be the most appropriate place on the thing. I had sent that we might need to bring it closer to the building. It just depends on what is in the ground and what we have to go around, and we have to make sure all of that stuff is appropriate. But it goes down deeper, and then, there's rebar and cement, and then, there's the tower, because the tower goes deeper into the cement. So, it's a cement block. It's all, they determine it. That's another thing that the company we get the towers from, they tell us exactly how to build the foundation.
So, the cement is below the level of the ground or above?
It'll be cement above. It'll be both.
Okay.
It'll be both. And there'll be rebar and certain kind of rebar and certain kind of nuts and bolts and, you know, they're very specific.
Is it constructed on-site or is it brought in and?
No, we would construct it on-site.
And how long would it take?
So, 3 pieces. So, each tower?
Each section?
Mm-hmm.
And how long does it take to construct it?
It doesn't take that long. I think the prep and the cement foundation is what takes the longest.
For it to set up?
Actually, putting the tower and building the tower, we just have to bring in a crane, and we have to do, yeah, so it's.
Is there room to bring in a crane?
Huh?
Is there room to bring in a crane? You've got a narrow driveway on either side.
Good point.
You can fly it over the building. Seriously.
Well, you've got Hogan's parking lot.
Yeah, we've got lots of options. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for the applicant?
I do. So, what, to meet your needs of what you're trying to put up with this tower, what is the height that you were looking for to be able to reach the customers you're trying to reach?
The 120 feet is what we would like to put in, because it has to be line of sight. So, and that's not line and sight, like how far I can see, because you'll see in the packet, it says that it can go 5 miles, but we've got a lot of tall trees, walnuts, eucalyptus trees, you know, so the taller we can go, the better, the more people we can reach.
And then, the second question is, that tower that's on top of the roof, is it 80 feet from the ground to the top of the tower, or is the tower itself 80 feet?
I'm going to have the answer. I can tell.
I think the tower is 80.
Let me, let me find out what the answer is, because I?
There's a couple, couple more questions on that. So, my other question would be, is 100 or 120 feet, the total height, how would that compare to the existing tower? Would it be the same height? Will the new tower be taller or lower?
If I've done my calculations right, it should be taller, because we need to reach more people, because we still have, there are still some things that are in the way of being able to reach each of our customers. So, I can, I can find out, because I have my engineer on, he's one of the, he's on Zoom.
He's on a meeting?
Zoom meeting. So, can you open it up for Velociter Wireless?
Yeah, hello.
Who are we speaking to?
Yes, my name is Scott.
Scott, do you know the tower, the height of the tower on the roof now?
Yeah, I do. We're not exactly certain because it's based upon the height of the building itself, but we estimate that tower to be circa 85 to 95 feet right now.
With the building?
From the top of the roof or from the ground?
From the ground.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're looking for an additional like 25 to 30 feet from what it is now.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then.
You have anything?
Well, you stole my thunder. Those were my exact questions about the height, so I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Next time.
I'll go first.
I do. First, I guess this is back to staff, and that'll preface my question. Was there a permit required for the existing tower? I noted in there that there wasn't any documentation of the tower being built.
Same, same processes would have applied if the, if the city had known that the tower was going up, it would have been a use permit and then, a variance depending on where they fit with the municipal code, which it was a lattice, so a variance would be required as well.
That would be my first question. Was there a reason why there wasn't a permit pulled for that first tower?
Yeah, I don't know. I wasn't working for the company at the time. I do know that I'm going through the process of making sure every single tower that we have has a permit, so I'm quite busy. Yeah, because we have a couple more towers going up, so.
Okay, I've got a couple more. The tower that's going in now, I'm assuming that it'll operate with more power or potentially like a higher frequency? Is that correct?
Well, not so much frequency as it would be. We have new technology coming out all the time, and we have that technology. In fact, I have at least half our staff at a conference in LA, and they're learning about better technology so that we can be, we can reach more customers at a higher speed. Right now, I don't know if you guys have been listening to any of the broadband council. They want a minimum, they consider 10 megabytes down, 2 up to be unserved. And so, right now, our area is unserved for the most part. So, we need to bring it up to speed, and there's no sense in, in our opinion, messing with the tower that's already on there, because as you see, the tower didn't come down in the last 2 big windstorms. I mean, it's still standing. We didn't have any issues with that. So, we want to be able to put up the new tower, put up the new equipment, and then, take down that other tower. But we can't do, you know, we have to finish the tower first and then, take down the other tower. So, it's important that we are able to get this new equipment up, get a higher height so we can, because I don't know if you understand how our business works, but, you know, the tower talks to another tower, which talks to people, which talks, you know, so we have a big network, and it all starts with our tower here. So, yeah, it's really important, but it just didn't make any sense to us to try and upgrade that equipment, because it takes down a lot of people while we're trying to do that. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
It draws another question. So, from your statement that the tech is advancing and the use permit would be for 10 years, do we have a study showing the chance, or do we have an estimation showing that this tech would be obsolete in less than those 10 years, and we would need to do this again?
Build a new tower? I don't think, because, okay, how do I put this?
You can change the technology of the existing tower, but it wouldn't be as great a benefit if you didn't have a taller tower and had the newer technology.
Correct, yeah, because the, having a secure, I mean, what we have up there is secure, obviously, it's made it past the 2 windstorms, but we need to be able to change some of that technology. So, but, but things come up. That would be one of my other questions is the 10 years, so I'll get back to that. But having a tower, it's much more secure changing out equipment or putting it in a new location, moving it for a standalone tower versus, I mean, they can climb that tower that's on our roof, no problem, but we would prefer to have a more solid, you know, something we're not worried about, guide wires, and we're not worried about all that stuff.
And staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this variance is specifically for the tower. It has nothing to do with the technology. So, 6, 7, 8 years from now, if they need to change the receivers or the transponders on the tower, they climb up there or go up in a crane and pull the tech, technology off?
Right.
Put new technology on?
Correct.
Building permit?
Yeah, the, this application is for the tower itself. It's very common, once the tower is in and they put on antennas and the different equipment, every few years, that'll get switched out. It doesn't need to come back to Planning Commission to change the equipment. They just apply for a building permit and get that swapped out and approved through the building department. Only Planning Commission for the sites and changing of towers.
Specific to like cellphone towers, we get a lot of those. The technology has been changing. I mean, it seems like they just replaced it.
Every few years, yeah.
Yeah, and then, they come back in and replace it again, so it's pretty frequent.
I do have one more. I was just curious if there was somewhere that we could show a study of the, of potential RF radiation that would be utilized by the technology that you're proposing to install so we could have an idea of the effect on the fellow businesses and residents?
In your packet, there's a flyer from RF that I pulled out from the, I think it was a government study. Because we're not like a cell tower. Cell tower has a lot of equipment that has a lot of stuff on it that may or may not be good for you, whereas, the type of equipment we use, this is not an issue based on the information that I've been able to pull. So, yeah, it's all of like 3 or 4 pages.
And the FCC sets the guidelines for radio frequency exposures. We have in here condition number 12. Once the tower is up, the equipment is installed, they do have to have a test of RF emissions, and that test and report will prove that they're within the guidelines.
I saw that, right? And it had to be tested at full power. So, what would happen if it tested higher than the allowance? Project beef or not?
It'd be the FCC.
I would imagine they would have to make adjustments.
Yeah, they would have to adjust.
Yeah, and we're regulated by the FCC, so we, yeah, we have to keep our ducks in a row as well. And I do have a question. I was curious why you chose 10 years versus longer?
So, the 10 years is just the minimum. At staff, we put in what the minimum requirement is, so they had said 100 feet. We did minimum 100 feet. The minimum, in accordance with state laws, 10 years. If, if the applicant is requesting longer than that, as long as the Planning Commission approves it, it's fine. So, you could, it's just a minimum of 10 years, but that's, that's open. Whatever you would like to propose, as long as the Planning Commission approves it, that would be fine.
What, what do you have in your other locations?
Well, each, well, each agreement we have with our different homeowners, because we build on personal property, each, each contract is different, but we have an automatic renewal with them. So, and we renew, and we give them, I think, 30, 60, 90 days if we do not want to renew. So, we just keep going until somebody has an issue, and we haven't had anybody have an issue. So, the, the fact that we, at 10 years, I have to come back and do all this other stuff, I would prefer to do twice that long myself.
I have a question. So, do you own the, does your company own the property, or are you leasing the property?
That is a good question. I know you guys in Escalon have a lot of handshake deals, and the current owner of Velociter has a relationship with the property owner, and there's options to buy the property. So, so we don't own it, but he knows exactly what we're up to. In fact, that was part of the application, was that he would have to sign it and know what we're up to.
Well, the reason I was asking a question? Well, the reason I was asking the questions, if you, if you have like a ground lease on it with a 20-year ground lease, well, it would make sense and we should permit the tower to reflect the, the term of the ground lease. That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
I have a concern. You talked about not knowing what you were going to find when you started digging. Right now, you can come down the driveway from Second Street, you can come down the driveway from Main and I think you can go through. And if the tower's in the corner, you'll still have that ability, but if you have to bring the tower out from the corner, it's going to cut into the, the throughway.
It depends on how big the base ends up being. So right now, I thought I had submitted the new location, but.
No, I don't have anything.
Yeah, I, I had mentioned, when I dropped off paperwork, I had mentioned it, but perhaps it didn't get to you. But if you look at C. So the, the northeast corner where if you, you've probably been that, by that property, there's a, in the middle of the building is like a, a little, I don't know, stoop, I don't know, it's, it's a, a walkway. So in the middle of it, next to, so if you're coming into, on the Main Street, if you're coming into that section, we were looking to put it right by the properties, so it would be right by, right next to that, already that cement thing that's coming out, there might be a better.
You're not talking about the brick walkway between the building and the American Legion post?
Correct.
The handicapped access?
No.
No, you're talking about the other side?
It's in the back, so in the back of the building, it's in this section right here.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've already got, like the walkway extended so that the, the tower would actually be right there next to it. Because in that section, in the northeast corner, there's like a drainage issue, not issue, but a drainage thing and I think there's some pipes going through there. So the owner was a little concerned about that area and, and then running our cable. So that's why he asked to move it to the other place, so.
Okay.
I, I did drop off the extra stuff, but I don't remember.
I don't.
That's okay, it's all good.
There is some underground water piping.
On C exhibit A2. So it would actually, this is, this is straight up and down here, so it would, we were looking at putting it right here versus putting it here.
Like how many feet out from the building?
That would be, depend on what the engineering docs tell us that we need to do.
And is there a door there into the building?
Um, no, there's a, well, there's a fair amount of space before the door.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know what the base, the, the width of the base of the tower would be?
Well, it would, it depends on what the engineering company states, which, which tower we would end up needing to do. Like our 100-foot tower that we have at a property in Escalon, I think that base is like four by four, four by six, something like that. It's not very big, because it's not, it's not like the police station tower, lattice tower that's like humongous at the bottom, it's, it's not like that at all.
And does this tower, you mentioned other places where you have a tower on private property. Does this tower need specifically to be at your place of business?
That's where everything starts.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, so that's why we have the tower on top of the, the building. That's, that's where everything starts. We have fiber coming into that building and everything starts there and then it talks to either another tower or it talks to customers, but we have a fairly large network of towers.
Okay.
Kristi, is, is Velocitor headquartered in, at the, in Escalon?
Yes.
And how many customers do you have throughout the 95320 zip code?
Zip code, I don't have that number with me. I also.
Do you have any guesses?
I, yeah, I also noticed that one of the person on the line is our competitor, so I'd rather not discuss details like that.
Fair enough.
You know, I have a concern about the number of variables that we have in this. We don't know the exact location.
So I think it's a, a point that I would like to share with my fellow commissioners, that anytime a tower is designed in the construction world, it's called turnkey. And so while Ms. Anthony doesn't know the specifics that we're asking, or the question is because Velocitor doesn't know the answers to that, because they are waiting for direction from us to tell them what height they will be permitted. So a foundation for a tower that is 120 feet tall is different than a tower that is 85 feet tall or is 150 feet tall. And so we don't know those specific information because once Velocitor gets this approval or denial, then what Velocitor will do is they will go to the tower manufacturer and say, okay, Mr. Tower Designer, we have approval for 120 feet high. And then they sign a contract and guess what? That company does absolutely everything and then Velocitor comes in, hooks up their stuff, and then it's done. So when we're asking questions about the, well, obviously we have to get a building permit, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But as far as the very specific questions we're asking, as far as, what was it, four foot six or is that eight foot, eight by 10, is it two by three? No one here can answer that because the tower height is that critical factor that determines how big the foundation actually is.
If the building was built in 1911, we don't have the schematics of what's under the parking lot area. We don't know what's underground until we look or do we have some, do we call 811?
And they will have to call 811 for any electrical lines or water sewer, any, any underground utilities would be notified by 811 that there will be digging happening and they will go out and mark their lines.
Worst case scenario, they can also bring in ground penetrating radar and the radar will tell them where the lines go as well. But you don't know until that first shovel goes in the ground and the minute you hit a sewer line, yeah, it is a sewer line.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Sorry, I, I didn't mean to.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Go on that digression. I'm just, I'm dealing this, with this right now on a radio tower on a separate project that I work on and it's what they told me. So I just, I wanted to share with my fellow commissioners.
Well, and pardon my ignorance, but do you have to be a Velocitor customer to avail yourself of what the business does? Or if you've got like wifi in the area, does it enhance that wifi if you're not a Velocitor? No?
No, no, it would be for Velocitor customers, but something else that I discussed with the owners that if for some reason the, the, like the fire department needs to put something on our tower, then we're willing to talk about that as well. You know, something, not our competitor, obviously, but you know, it's important that, that, that's one of the things that California requires too, that you look for an existing tower and then you try and add to that. Can't, we can't add more to what our current tower has because it's, it's at capacity and we don't want to overload it and have it fall down like other towers have done. So, yeah. Does that answer your question?
She's talking about relocating.
Well, so the fire department has a tower, but they can't piggyback on that?
It's already overloaded.
Okay.
Sorry, that's my opinion.
Oh, okay.
But if the fire department, that's what she was just explaining, that if the fire department said, we need more antenna space, Velocitor would consider talking to the fire department or talking to PD just to share the use of the tower.
Yeah.
And I, I went down there yesterday to look at the wires that are in the area and they weren't, they were taut enough that they weren't swaying too much in the wind.
Right.
So I felt okay and then I looked, there's a telephone pole with transponders on it and I don't know that there's any, I don't know. And as far as I know, there's only one resident really nearby, right next door, but, but like Jeremy was bringing up the, the frequency and all that, there's no harm, no interference?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
I have another question kind of to piggyback on what Jeremy was stating. That FCC testing, I mean, you test at one time, but do we know the frequency of them performing those tests to make sure you're within that range?
If I may answer?
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, the equipment that we use is regulated by the FCC and it must pass a rigorous testing before it goes into production by the FCC. So it's not capable of producing emissions outside of FCC guidelines. So the, the testing is actually a bit of a mute point because it's already been done prior to the manufacturing of the equipment, if that makes sense.
So it's almost like putting a governor on the equipment inside the factory, so there is never any chance that it can ever exceed those FCC guidelines because the manufacturer is responsible for adhering to those FCC guidelines.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. That's a good way to put it.
Okay.
So does that mean that we are still required to do some sort of test afterwards?
As long as it meets the FCC, that's all that, that's all we can require, correct.
And we could provide documentation that shows the equipment that we use is, been inspected by and certified by the FCC for use in the United States.
I think that's really, going to be really important when you submit for your building permit if this is approved.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I just, so we need to come up with a height and we're kind of stuck because we can say 120 feet, for example, but you may come back and say, well, that's not enough. What is the process, you know, when you do some more research and maybe it needs to be 130 because of the line of sight? How, how does that all work? Is that part of the appeals process?
It would be, it would be an amendment to the, to the existing agreement or existing But they did indicate 1 to 130 and so that's what's been reviewed with this application with, with the city and also legal counsel. And so as long as it's within that, what was already notified and that's what's been sent out to residents and such as 1 to 130, anything within that is, is fine.
So our findings could be a range rather than a specific number?
Whatever Kristi would, would request and if it's within that number, that would be fine. If you wanted to do a range, that's fine too.
Do you like 120?
I do.
I think, Ms. Chair, I think we have other people on the go-to meeting.
Anybody else want to speak? Is it just Scott that's on there or is it, Scott, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to state that the height of the tower allows for future expansion without modification of the structure itself. So there's a limited amount of equipment that could be installed at each height. And as we mentioned before, if the city police or some other emergency services wanted to install equipment or needed a relay, that would consume a portion of the vertical real estate of that tower. And so having some additional height allows us to future-proof this structure for, as was brought up earlier, advancements in technology or perhaps unforeseen needs of the structure in the future.
Okay. I do see a few other people on the go-to meeting site. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this issue? Okay, thank you. Okay, back to the commission. What do we want to do?
Just as a reminder, we would be updating, if you were to move forward with the approval, updating the height to 120 and then updating the location, which we currently have the northeast corner. And she was advising of that area center to the building and we can take that visually and try to give you, add into the condition a better description of it in that area. It's off the property line and so it might, it might be better in terms of where it's located in, for surrounding neighbors and such, closer to their building, not as close to neighboring properties and so.
So, Ms. Chair, I would like to add a condition that the final location of, if this project, let me first say this, that if this project, this variance is approved, that the final location of the tower and associated foundation is reviewed and signed off by the fire department.
That makes sense.
Want to make sure that they're not putting the tower out in the middle of that.
For access purposes.
For access purposes.
Okay, for access purposes.
Now, they were notified of this and they didn't respond because now that I think about it, is either driveway wide enough for the fire truck or fire engine?
This project was sent to the fire department and they had no comments.
They could certainly deal with any problem on, on Main or on Second.
I would think that their hoses would be long enough to where they probably wouldn't pull onto Main Street's property, they would probably remain in the street, but we can confirm that with them definitely.
Just want to make sure that there's not an access problem.
Sure.
And as far as the height goes, I would like to make, to make a recommendation that we, we just, I mean, it sounds like the applicant prefers 120 feet, but I would say that, I mean, if you're going that tall, does another 10 feet really matter? I mean, if they deter, through the engineering process, if they determine they need another 10 feet, give them another 10 feet.
No taller than 130?
Yes. Cap it out at 130, but let the engineering decide how, what works, not necessarily us as the planning commission. They know their business much more than we do.
And I want to back up to the screening. If you've got your metal fence and gates and you've got their buildings, on the one hand, it doesn't seem like you need more fencing around the base of the, but kids will be kids. Somebody just the other day told me about kids getting on top of dense school and riding skateboards. I couldn't believe it. So somebody could scale the fence and then get on the tower and, you know, be king of the mountain, I don't know, but, so, I don't know. I, I guess leaving the screening condition in there, but just to achieve safety.
Well, could we, how do we do that, staff? Because we don't permit chain link fence with slats and that's typically the kind of fencing that's used in this application.
Yeah, so.
If I may?
Oh, go ahead.
Is that Scott?
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So given the, the tight quarters where we're already confined by a fence, we have an alternative option that I may suggest.
Okay.
The tower may be equipped with anti-climb sides, which is essentially a, a barrier that goes on the base of the tower for the first maybe 12 feet or so that prevents an individual from climbing on the tower without a access key.
So then how would anybody access it should they need to? Would there be a key lock on those, on the structure?
Yes, correct. Correct. It essentially would, would render the, the scalable portion of the tower inaccessible, it would become smooth.
And would it be four sides or the same as the tower?
It's a three-sided structure that adheres to the tower itself, so it's a, it doesn't consume any more real estate than the tower does.
So you're not getting up the tower unless you have the key to give, make.
So, so in number nine, if we could say appropriate safety, you know, screening, retarding of access by unauthorized people?
We have that, we have, we talk about preventing unauthorized access as well and number 10 for security, which would, that would also fit that as well, where it would be security, equipment and facilities installed in a manner to avoid detractive nuisance and prevent unauthorized access climbing graffiti.
Okay.
That could be, and that would account for that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay, what else?
We look at the 10 years versus maybe 15 or something longer.
How do we feel about that?
All it needs is to be a minimum, so whatever the planning commission decides.
13 pieces of flares, the bare minimum. Anyways, so, I mean, Velociter has been in, how long have you guys been in business in Escalon?
In Escalon, I believe it was?
Thousand threes, according to our records.
Okay, so at least 18 years.
Correct.
And obviously, they're doing something right. They're still in business 18 years later. So why do we want to put a cap on it for 10 years? I mean, I feel like if they're, if they're a business that's thriving, do we really need to put a cap for 10 years or do we need to say as long as they are in business in Escalon and paying, have an active business license in Escalon? I mean, they're a business just like everybody else and so.
What was the process for reapplication? It seemed relatively simple in the report, right, after the 10 years?
It would basically be redoing what we have now. So what they submitted now, they would submit either a reapplication within 90 days before or submit for an amendment. So it would be the, basically the same process that we currently have unless it's modified in that time period. So in the next 10 or 15 years, if we go through and update wireless communications facilities or make updates in the municipal code, then that would, that would be applied to their amendment. So if there are changes made, those changes may apply as to which they would be covered under the variance application.
I have a question for the applicant. If you take down a ground melted tower, how cumbersome is that? What's, what's left when you remove the tower?
Usually the base. So unless you're going to break up the, because we can take it down to the stud, but you still have the cement that's there and the cement that's further. So like if we were to take down a tower at a, one of our other locations, we would, we would take it down to the stub. But you have to remember, this is the key tower for our whole business. So to say, okay, well, we think you'll be in business for another 10 years and that's it. We've already proven that we've, you know, been in business at 18, 18 years as, you know, incorporated as a business, probably longer, you know, when it started. So that's why I'm asking, you know, to limit it to 10 years, that's, that's, that's challenging because that's, that's where our business starts.
And the 10 years was, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but the 10 years was based off of the FCC guidelines for this type of tower, correct?
The state law has a minimum of 10 years once approved. And so it can be longer and what you pointed out, attaching it with the business license is appropriate. That's, that's actually a good indication for us.
We can take that section out.
Yeah, amend Part 3, the permit duration and get rid of the references to the 10 years.
So we could amend number 3, the permit duration, that the use permit shall be valid?
As long as?
Well, I got a question.
Until it's terminated.
So do other use permits have a termination? Or isn't usually when that use does not exist anymore, that use permit goes away?
Unless the planning commission gives them an expiration date. So conditional, we call them use permits in the municipal code. They do have that word conditional. They use that word conditional, generally speaking, because the planning commission has a discretion to place a time period or expiration on any project that comes forward. Our planning commission hasn't, hasn't done that, that I'm aware of, at least in the last few years. However, this one, specific to wireless facilities, that was added into the staff report because it was pointed out in state law that if it's approved, it has to be approved for a minimum of 10 years. And so we indicated that in there, put it in there. And then yes, however you, however you want to move forward, that's fine. If you recall, we did have a past application for a tentative, a temporary structure or building at one of the local churches and we had put in the 10-year minimum in there and the, and the planning commission approved that to be removed as well and to not have an expiration period on that approval. It's well within your discretion to remove it completely or to double it or however, you just can't lower it less than the 10 years.
Well, so we can say the use permit shall be valid for a period of at least 10 years, but then we don't have to say at the end of 10 years, they have to reapply or do all that. We can just say it has to be at least 10 years.
As long as the, as City of Escalon business license remains active. And if they, if they decide to leave, then I would suggest that the tower comes down as well. But I think.
I'm sorry, I would like to add, because we have two businesses, we have sister businesses, Velociter Wireless and Easywave. So it would be both businesses or at least one of the two businesses.
Okay. I think Commissioner, I can't speak for Commissioner Engel, but I think Commissioner Engel is concerned about the timeframe. What are your thoughts on that?
On the timeframe?
Yeah.
I was just inquiring as to how difficult the application process was because it doesn't say that it ends at 10 years, it's just that it would need to be reapplied for. So if it wasn't of significant work or significant cost, it's not really relevant if they're willing to do the work 90 days in advance to extend that. But I don't have any problem with what's being requested as far as adding it to the length of the business's existence.
We wouldn't be able to advise you whether the restrictions would be any different at that time period or whether the fee would be more or less either because it just depends on how things move forward over the years, so.
Christie's going to come back here in 2031 and say, my 10 years are up.
You're making me go through this again?
I think as long as we hold our business license, I would think that would be appropriate.
I think that's definitely.
That means we're, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and, you know, we're a viable business, so.
I think it is good that, that the business has been successful and hope it will continue to be so and we certainly don't want it to go anywhere.
Probably needed this tower about 18 months ago, but.
No doubt, no doubt.
Okay, we've made a few changes to the conditions. Someone like to make a recommendation?
I will make a motion.
Excuse me, may I make a comment?
Yes, is that Scott again? Or is that?
No, this is, my name is Matthew Ford. I'm actually a caller on the Zoom call.
Okay, go ahead, Matthew.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm the CEO of Iera. We're actually a direct competitor to Velocer and we currently operate off the fire department-owned tower across the street. We have no objection to this project and feel the more people in Escalon that have access to our choice of internet providers, it's better off for everybody. Iera, Velocer and other wireless internet providers are really filling in the gaps for coverage, you know, and, you know, many, we're going directly up against the monopolies like Comcast, AT&amp;T, and really just is a, provides a good service to the community. So again, we have no objection to this at all.
Okay, thank you. And maybe before I close the public hearing for good, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, I'll close the public hearing then and bring it back to the commission.
Just an overall comment and that is, you know, I think it's important that we, we obviously follow within the confines of the Escalon Municipal Code, but I think it's, we also as the planning commission have a certain charter to encourage our local small businesses such as Velocer and Iera. So it's good to see that our local businesses are continuing to thrive despite the craziness of Comcast, Xfinity and AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera, et cetera. So Christie, for you and your team, I wish you guys all the best as well as Matthew, the caller from Iera, keep doing what you're doing to make this town great. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit and the appropriate variances. I would like to, actually, let me back up a second. I would like to make a motion to approve the wireless communications facility master plan. Then I would also include it in that motion. We find that the project is SECA categorically exempt under Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures and authorized staff to file the SECA notice of exemption. I would like, and with the approval, we have made the findings as required for Escalon Municipal Code, Section 17.57.030, findings for variances and 17.56.030, conditional use permits included in that, in the motion. We approve the variance and the conditional use permits, conditional use permit application with the conditions of approval as modified by the planning commission previously noted in this meeting.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, we have one, one nay and four in favor.
The approval does get approved?
Yes.
Just to confirm.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll move to administrative matters.
Okay, I don't believe I have any.
I have none.
None matters from the audience? Is there anyone on any other issue that would like to speak? It's nothing that we'll address tonight, but we can hear you and then take the issue to the appropriate person or venue or? I don't hear anybody. All right, close that part of the meeting, staff communications.
I don't have anything.
There's so many things I could talk about, but I just, I don't have it going on right now. I can update you on a few items that we've discussed at council level, the city and, and school district community pool. There was discussion about that at the last meeting. It does have some issues that are currently being discussed at council and school district level. And so we're working on that to do our best to address those issues because the current assessment on the pool, it looks like, according to that assessment that was paid for by both the school district and the city, there's about $2 million in repairs that need to be made to it. And then we also, in that assessment, looked into the possibility of trying to get a new pool, if we were to increase the size of the pool to where it could actually be usable to the school district for tournaments and swim, competitive swim, swim teams, those type of things. It would be about approximately $4 million. Of course, both of those numbers knock the socks off of the council. And so we are looking into finding additional information, researching the item, and so that is something that we'll be continuing to work on. And then also regarding the skate park, at the last meeting, the city council approved earmarking, $220,000 of city monies to be used towards a future skate park. It is not an approval, it is an earmark at this point with intent to be put towards the skate park. We will also be working with the skate park foundation or the parks foundation to move that forward. We still need an MOU and so there are outstanding items that need to be done in order for those things to move forward. And so those are the big ticket items that we've been dealing with at council level. Also, the leases are up for almonds harvesting that we have with Tilbury Farms, both at the seven acre property that we own over at Catherine and St. John, as well as our 19 acre property that is determined at this time to be a future parkland or future community park. And so those are also things we're working towards, figuring out what we're going to do with those areas now that those leases are up. Because Tilbury Farms has indicated that they would not be interested in any more short-term lease because the trees are in bad shape and need to be replaced. So of course, if he were to get a long-term lease, he would restore all the trees, put in all new trees, but in order to gain the profit and cover those expenses, he would want that long-term lease. And so we're exploring the possibility of a long-term lease on the seven acres because we have no idea at this point in time what we'd be doing with that. So they are open to that. But in terms for the 19 acres located up past Hogan Park, they have concerns and so they have addressed or asked me to bring back the master plan that was approved on that property and see if they want to make any changes to that where maybe they cut off a back portion because we know right now interest is, is on the front portion. The skate park is, the designated area for the skate park is along Escalon Baloda, where we're anticipating a senior housing project would, would go in the future, the three to five acres that we've discussed, along Escalon Baloda. Also, there is a small area that we've recently designated for the surface water project that we're going to be moving forward on as well, Escalon Baloda, the top corner, the northeast, northmost corner of that property would be a little piece going towards surface water for some equipment. So they have, they're exploring those options. Nothing's been approved yet, nothing's been acted on at this point in time besides the earmarking of those funds, just all in process.
The swimming pool's not even 20 years old, is it?
It is 21 years old, 2,000.
Is that the normal lifespan of a swimming pool?
I hear it is, yes. Life, lifespan, considering, there really, it doesn't appear that there's been a lot of ongoing maintenance to keep it from going that way. It's either maybe not been budgeted and, and that's, you know, it's, it's school district property, but we also have our, our city investment as well. And so it's just something that maybe could have been prevented, but this is where we're at at this point in time, so.
And now I was on the committee that raised funds for the pool. Was there any money left over when we did that that is sitting somewhere maybe and?
If there is, I'm not aware. I can definitely ask the question. I don't think so, but I don't know.
Maybe there's some community member out there, farmer, that's interested in the naming right.
I mean, in all, all things would be explored. At this point in time, what the council's really wanting staff to look into and find out is what would need to be done so that the city could continue swim lessons. That's, that's what we're looking for. We want to be able to continue offering the swim lessons and carrying out the recreation portion that we do.
That more so than the competitions.
Yeah, that would, that we won't be able to do anyway because the pool's not large enough, but they're not looking to construct a new pool.
Okay.
The only difference being is because it's on school property, not city property, it is under jurisdiction to the state architects, DSA, not, not our California building code. I mean, it's, it's through a different jurisdiction, so there may be different requirements, different processes, those type of things. And so that, that may prevent, that may, may potentially limit us on what we would be able to do because it's through a different agency, so.
So let me ask you this, Dominique.
Sure.
In, in your interim city manager hat now. So the last school bond measure that passed or that failed, in my opinion, without getting into politi, or politics, I believe that it failed for a numerous, numerous amount of reasons, more so, for the lack of a better term, arrogance that it was just going to pass just because it was going to pass. But would, while the school district, that bond measure failed, would the city consider, consider passing, trying to pass a bond to improve city? trying to pass a bond to improve city recreational facilities, i.e. putting in new bathrooms at Hogan Park, putting in putting in a new community swimming pool, taking part of these proceeds and helping to develop the skate park, et cetera, et cetera. So the bond measure would be specifically for improving city recreational facilities, and the bond would be by the city, not by the school district. Because as you noted, when it's when the swimming pool is on school district property, your hands start to become tied because you start to have to deal with DSA, you have to start dealing with the state fire marshal. And right now, in construction in California, those two are killers for construction projects. And so I just see an opportunity where this bond could possibly come from the city and not necessarily the school district. And it would be a way to improve the community for our younger families. One of the biggest complaints, and this isn't your fault, I mean, it's it's definitely a staffing issue, but one of the biggest complaints I have right now with swim lessons and rec swim is, like last summer, what was it, 1 to 3, Monday through Friday, 1 to 4, Monday through Friday, and for working parents, those times don't work whatsoever. And so if there's an opportunity where we have the pool open for longer, we have a nicer pool, we have people wanting to start a swim team here in Escalon, I mean, I see so many doors being open because right now, yeah, while the the pool was great 21 years ago, you know, pools, like everything, pools have evolved. And and I think that it may be something to consider. So.
That's a great suggestion. That has not been brought up. Doesn't mean it cannot be brought up. Specific to the school district, they have indicated that they have a track that needs improvements that they have not been able to put any money towards, that gets used on a daily basis. So their priority would be to address their track and and that area, more so than the pool. And so they have, they have basically indicated that they wouldn't wouldn't be able to to provide any assistance on the pool. And so it would be that if we moved forward on that, it does sound like the school district would not want to be involved. If we ended up doing a new pool, it would just be us anyway, if if we went in that direction. Also regarding, you had mentioned Hogan bathrooms, we got a grant for that, a Prop 68 grant. We have ordered new bathrooms for Hogan Park. We did pay a portion of that. It was a matching grant, I believe we are contributing, I want to say 20% of the project cost. It might be a little bit more, but that's on order. We're just waiting for that to come in. Big, brand new bathrooms, all up to current code, family restrooms, storage area. I hear it's pretty beautiful for a bathroom. So very excited about that. But yeah, I do see what you're saying, some type of bond or that would have that would apply for recreation. You did indicate on the swim lessons, the hours and stuff. And and I don't know if it was prior to that, but before COVID and this pandemic, they were offered later in the evening because I had my daughter in them. What I have been made aware of during this process is that with the pandemic and and everything that's gone on, there is a national shortage on lifeguards and swim instructors. And so that is what we were dealing with, barely being able to get people interested in doing it. The pay was too low. And so it had been shared to me that even if we wanted to get swim lessons and lifeguards, we would have to up the pay to get anybody's interest in it. And so we did have a nationwide shortage on that. And that that hit us pretty hard, these trying to restore swim lessons back to what it was. So.
I'd like to make a motion to have Commissioner Castellanos be head lifeguard.
[laughing]
That was like 40 some odd years ago.
I used to be a lifeguard. That was my first job.
I can't swim.
Yeah, I ask.
It was with the city rec department.
May I ask a question regarding the earmark, if you will?
Sure.
So on the.
Do you like how he waits for my response?
No, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Oh, boy.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, my feelings are hurt. No, go ahead.
We're in staff communications, seeking answer from staff.
Okay, so, thank you. In the September 22 council meeting, Mayor Protem Alagero noted that he met with, he and Councilman Crummick met with the Skate Park Foundation Board, if you will, and that their intent was to issue a, or they needed to talk to their builder and talk, his specific language was, they needed to talk to their builder and they determine a maximum cost. And then, once they determine that maximum cost, then the city could determine what would be possibly earmarked towards that. My question is, how can the city provide public funds to a foundation that already has a contractor in mind and not be in violation of the public contract code for fair and equitable bidding?
It just depends on our procurement policy, which is currently under review by our legal counsel.
Okay.
But we do have our own procurement policy. And that did come up at the last meeting to check into that and make sure that we would be able to use DreamWorks.
Okay. My only, just double check that because I would hate for the city to give these funds and then be in violation of the public contract code.
Yeah. And I mean, and all of that's going to need to be addressed in the MOU. And that was brought up because they had, they had briefly talked about sole sourcing and those type of things, like what you would need to do in order to continue to use DreamWorks, since that's the company that they've been working with this entire time. And DreamWorks was the company that they wanted to go with because that company, I guess, how it's created allows for a amount of volunteerism, either from the residents and or materials. They've somehow worked that into their company to where they they allow for it. And so that was why the Skate Park Foundation wanted to use them, because they will allow volunteerism, either helping construction. It's it's limited, but it's more so than any other companies that would just tell you flat out no. So.
And back to the earlier point about the pool. If you're going through the procurement review right now, I know this is really progresses for little old Escalon, but there are opportunities out there for public-private partnerships. And if you're talking about the potential for maybe a pool, that may be another avenue but to consider, but that's tied directly to procurement. And most municipalities aren't well versed on it, and so they're afraid and they're nervous. But my suggestion would be to do everything you can to get out of the traditional design bid build construction project world.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm done asking staff my question.
Is Orlando still on target for December or January?
Good question.
They're still having their building plans reviewed. So no permit issued yet.
They do have some changes they'll need to make in accordance with Caltrans regulations.
So. My question is, how's that process going with Caltrans?
I mean, it seems like it's going fine. You haven't heard from them recently, huh? No, they just needed to work on, it sounds like at the last time that we heard, they'll need to widen their driveways a little bit for trucks to be able to turn out, which we kind of anticipated. But but Caltrans has the main jurisdiction on that because it's their highway. So.
They purchased that property?
They have.
The street?
They did.
Oh, really?
Wait, oh, the one next door? I don't know about the one next door.
Oh, the one that was the Bonnie's?
It took so long for this one to get purchased, I thought you wanted confirmation that it got purchased.
He made it sound like.
We waited three years.
He's going to go the next day.
Yeah, he made it sound like he was, they had a, he was looking.
I mean, I don't believe the sign is up, but I haven't looked. And so it wouldn't surprise me if he did. But we haven't heard from him recently. So they're kind of just working that out with Caltrans. It's, it's really funny because we went many, many years not getting any response from Caltrans, and somehow magically, somebody has turned up from Caltrans, and now we have a contact with Caltrans that responds to everything. And we're like, wow, we never knew that logs existed. So.
Well, it's probably because.
It's been awakening.
Probably because Caltrans screwed up the main artery through town last year, but that's aside the point.
There we go.
Okay.
I digress.
We'll switch from staff communications to commuter commissioner communications. You have anything?
That's it.
No, I kind of covered it before.
John?
I just wanted to apologize for my, to my fellow commissioners about missing last meeting. I was at a work conference in Philadelphia, and I had every intent to call in and I just blanked. So, but you probably enjoyed that because the meeting only lasted 45 minutes and here we are tonight, an hour and a half into it, and I just won't shut up.
We did comment, so.
One of them said it.
They probably all said it.
Is that in the minutes?
Yeah. Commissioner Sarkozy was happy that.
Okay, nothing else.
He watched it. No, just kidding.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, everyone.
Guilty.
Mr. Castellanos.
This conference is no longer being recorded.